Ready, is our audio back there on? I'm assuming somebody's back there.
The door is open.
Yeah, it's doing it, sir. Uh, okay. All right, in this case, we'll call the meeting to order. This is the North Miami Planning Commission, meeting in special session on Wednesday, November fourteenth, twenty eighteen, at eight P.M. in council chambers. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Please be seated. Let's have the roll call, please.
Chair Kevin Seifried.
Present.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Here.
Commissioner Jason James.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Pashon.
Here.
Commissioner Michael McDermott.
Here.
We have quorum.
All right, we have to have approval of minutes. Are there any amendments? Yes, we have an amendment to the agenda. Ms. Love, right, you're gonna make some reports?
Yes, sir. Under old business, we have an update on the request for presentations from your letter, as well as an update on measuring incidental from the convenience store definition.
Okay, fine, very good. All right, then, let's go on to approval of minutes of October second, twenty eighteen. All right, moved by Commissioner McDermott. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Bob Pashon. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes are approved. We'll sign this. Brought my blue pen tonight. Thank you, Madam Secretary. All right, we have no communications then tonight? No, okay. We have no continued public hearing, which brings us to item five, public hearing, P.C. nine dash eighteen.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Because of a conflict of interest, I have to recuse myself from this meeting.
From discussion and voting, okay, we understand.
Okay.
All right, very good, thank you. Let the record reflect that Mike McDermott has a conflict of interest and needs to recuse himself from this item.
Do we have forms for the... Do you do it, ready? Okay.
Okay, P.C. nine dash eighteen. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending chapter twenty-nine of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations at Article One, entitled General Provisions, specifically at Section one dash one zero six, entitled Official Zoning Map, to extend eastwardly the boundary of the planned corridor development, E.C.D., overlay district by one parcel, to include a parcel of real property approximately four point one three acres in size, located at eighteen fifty northeast one hundred twenty-third street, to allow for the proposed development of the vacant property in accordance with Section one six six point zero four one, P.R.N. three, P.R.N. C., Florida statutes twenty seventeen, and Sections three dash one zero zero two, three dash one zero zero three, three dash one zero zero five through three dash one zero zero seven, and Section three dash three zero two of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-nine, entitled Land Development Regulations, declaring the zoning map amendment to be consistent with the city comprehensive plan, further authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to effectuate the zoning map amendment, providing for repeal, conflict severability, codification, and for an effective date staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. For the record, Debbie Love, City Planner, Community Planning and Development. Tonight, what you have before you is the request for the zoning map amendment to comport with the future land use map amendment that you all had approved previously, and that has now been officially adopted by the city council. Florida statute requires that the zoning map actually match the future land use map. So this is the next logical step in the approval process. So let me walk you through this presentation quick. My apologies, I did have it working a moment ago. There you go. What you'll see is the address is eighteen fifty northeast one twenty-third street, and it's just east of Biscayne Boulevard. As the title indicates, it's four point one three acres. It's currently vacant. The zoning isn't going to change. What will change, which is C two B E, what will change is actually the overlay now extending over the zoning. So the, as I said before, the future land use map amendment extending the P.C.D. was adopted on second reading at the end of September. The permitted height under the existing zoning is only fifty-five feet in height, and residential is not permitted. By extending the P.C.D., it allows a hundred and ten feet in height, but it also allows a bonus of up to forty feet in height. So for potential of a hundred and fifty feet, the permitted density is a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre with the P.C.D. It does provide then a, an ability to do mixed use. The maximum lot coverage is eighty percent, and they have to have the remaining to be twenty percent in open space. By using that calculation of a hundred and twenty-five dwelling units per acre, they could have a maximum of five hundred and sixteen dwelling units. However, through the restrictive covenant, they are, the applicant is proffering to limit it to, and essentially, at least for the next thirty years, and it's in, to be a two hundred and ninety-seven residential dwelling units. And they are currently have four hundred and forty-five parking spaces, using the shared parking methodology. And they're not going to exceed the ninety-nine point six feet in height. That is also part of the restrictive covenant. So while they could have the five hundred and sixteen, they're going to max it out at two hundred and ninety-seven dwelling units, while they could go up to a hundred and fifty feet, they're going to cap it at ninety-nine point six feet. The next thing that will happen after tonight, after your vote tonight, is this is scheduled for first reading at city council on, in December, at their December eleventh meeting, and then the second reading will be in January, at their next city council, the first city council meeting in January. The next step after that is, then there's a development agreement. You all have had before, come before you, conditional use permits? Well, if you're in the P.C.D., instead of a conditional use permit, the dwelling units are issued through a development agreement. That's the mechanism versus a conditional use permit. So the development agreement is actually a much stronger document. It's governed through Florida statute, Chapter three eighty, and again, they're going to cap it in that, through that development agreement. There's some other conditions in that development agreement. It will come back to you. That development agreement will be scheduled, tentatively, it's scheduled for your December fourth meeting. However, we are still working some, through some of the details of the development agreement with the applicant. So right now, that's what it is scheduled for. Then that will go to city council, same as you. You have to look at it. They have to look at it and approve it, along with a lot of conditions they have in that development agreement. And then it will go to DRC, and after DRC, because, remember how we were at, were going to delete the requirement for DRC approval, city council after DRC? City council opted to maintain that condition, but they upped the threshold from five thousand to twenty thousand square feet. So it will, the project will have to go back to city council for project review. Now, tonight, you're not approving the site plan, you're not, although you have a site plan in your package, there'll be some continued tweaks to that site plan through the DRC process. The, I suspect there may be some other changes to the site plan, you know, based upon DRC. Irrigation's going to be over here, you might have this over here, move that tree over here. But what you are approving is the zoning change. That's all you're approving tonight.
We're approving the map change.
Yes, yes, the zoning map change, correct.
Not the zoning change itself, the map.
Well, it, it is a zoning change, because you now have an overlay over top of your zoning. So, but you're amending the zoning map, that's correct.
But, but just to be clear on that, what, all that's been done. The restrictions are done, the council agreed to it, and we're bringing the zoning map in, in compliance with everything that's gone before it.
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
So that's, that's the end of my presentation, sir. The applicant is here.
All right, thank you.
The applicant is here, and I believe they...
All right, does the applicant wish to make a statement?
I believe they have a, a short presentation for you.
Good evening, Mr. Geller.
Good evening, Chair Seifried. How are you? And members of the commission, how are you all this evening? We're happy to appear in front of you. As you can see, you know the project. You've seen it. It's been voted on. It was recommended by the Planning Commission, and as Commissioner Pashon just points out, it was approved by the city commission, city council, pardon me. So you may well ask, why are we here? But your question is exactly the correct one, Commissioner Pashon. You're here because, for whatever reason, as your attorney will no doubt tell you, your code says that even though you've changed the land use, even though you've extended the overlay, there's still this formality that must be done, which is that the map must agree with the land use. The zoning map has to be in compliance with the land use. The land use actually controls. But there's still the issue of having to have the city commission, take, city council, excuse me, take care of that formality, and that means it comes to you for your review, your advice, and your recommendation to the city council as to what to do. As you know, there was a super majority that approved it for the city council. It was a long time in the happening. But we're very pleased that it's in front of you. There is a specific ordinance, again, which your council can direct you to, that the city council will be voting on. But basically, it just says what you know it says. The, the future land use map amendment is done, but the zoning map must go through these formalities of being changed. And so we come before you tonight to ask you, with all humility and all concern for your opinion, to please recommend that the city council take this action and amend the zoning map to conform with your future land use map, and allow this to proceed to the apparently numerous next steps, which Ms. Love has just outlined to you, involving approval of the development agreement, and DRC approval, and site plan approval. And I believe you will get the opportunity to weigh in. I know on the development agreement, that I believe, again, also later in the process, so your, your thoughts and comments continue to be welcomed by us and by the city. And unless you have questions, there it is again, and I'll keep this as short as possible. So happy to respond to any questions, but if not, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Geller. Does anybody on the commission have a question for Mr. Geller? Hearing no questions, we will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this ordinance is invited to step forward. Second call, anyone wishing to speak to this? Hearing no thundering heard, seeing no rising cloud of dust, on the third call, we close the public hearing. We can go straight to a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
All right, move made by Mr. Pashon, seconded by...
Second.
By Mr. Each. All in favor?
Aye.
So done. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously.
We'd like to thank you, although that seems pro forma, we'd like to thank you for taking your time to come in here and allow this to move forward. We know it's an imposition on everyone to take your time, and that you're volunteers. We appreciate your presence, as well as that of city staff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geller.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Even though we have approved it, there is one point that really is, is only on an advisory capacity, if it's permitted, with this to the developer. I would hope that when you do your concept presentation, that we look at the traffic Having gone through Fall Order to Boat Show up in Fall Lauderdale, and I handle logistics for the, for the Boat Show, there were unknown traffic problems that came up when there was added element of new development within the area, which we were totally caught by surprise. And I would hope that any developer such as yourself would kind of start to look at the overall environment that you're going to, to create your, your project in, and, and perhaps, you know, find a remediation to the problems that will probably come up in the future. We live in an urban, urban area. They're going to, to come up, no matter who puts a project in, wherever they put it in North Miami. Traffic is going to be an, you know, an inevitable problem, and we hope that maybe you could have the foresight to find some remediation to what might occur down the road.
I assure you, Commissioner Ernst, that we will be re-looking at this problem, not only because we want to, but frankly, as we've discovered in the past, your staff on DRC is extremely rigorous with us, and we will have, before we get site plan approval, we will have an extensive interaction with your staff, which I assume will be reflected to you in its entirety, both in the staff report and at the presentation of that site plan for your approval. Keep in mind that this developer is very invested, by which I mean not just financially, but emotionally, in the city of North Miami. And if there were a traffic problem that we allowed, the, the first and most significant impact would be on this same owner's property right across the street that wouldn't be able to get people in and out. So we are very sensitive to that, and you have our commitment. In fact, my client's whispering in my ear, they're already talking with the city traffic engineer to, that they've been out there, they've looked at the site with them, but that's, that will continue to be an ongoing process, to be sure that this is not something that's gonna be a problem, that it'll be the blessing to the city, that we hope it will be. And, you know, with that comes financial success for my clients. I mean, it's not...
It won't only just be your project, but I think anyone that brings in a new project is something that we're, we're going to have to look at.
Yes, sir, and I tell you...
It shouldn't take a resident twenty-five minutes to get across town.
Absolutely not, but we've got Debbie Love to contend with, so...
We're growing.
Before we can be back in front of you...
We love the development, and we love the growth, but we also need to remind all of us as, as citizens and, and people that are coming into the community, that, you know, we, we need to carefully look at, at how we allow the traffic to flow, and, and find ways to remedy the congestion.
And we will do that, Commissioner Ernst. Thank you, sir.
There was, there was an interesting article in today's Wall Street Journal about streets being clogged in Philly, New York, V.C., and it's the way of life, yep, you know?
Well, that's why we're looking at innovative solutions, including, you know, how we encourage ride sharing. That's why we're looking at things like access to mass transit. That's why we're looking at things like bike racks, so that people who live and work in the city, you know, and not to, to concentrate all the praise here, we better get it right in all the language, because we gotta get past Gary Halt, too, so. I mean, we're, we're kinda up against it here, but we'll, we'll do our best to make sure we can satisfy those two first, with the assumption that if we can do that, then hopefully we'll have a good outcome in front of all of you, too.
I appreciate your concern. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. And thank you all.
Thank you again.
All right, good luck.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, Ms. Love, to your reports now, please.
Yes, sir. At the last meeting, you requested a letter be sent to the city manager, requesting that, and I believe Marlene has copies, if you did not receive your copies, requesting that Sam Blatt present on economic development projects that are coming into the city, that, what was it? We had RASH, Public Works, talk about their road projects that are going on, as well as the CRA manager, Rasha, come before you and talk a little bit about the Mobility Hub project. You all should have received a link to the...
I do.
...plan, the Mobility Hub plan. That is the latest and greatest that went before, I believe, the CRA Advisory Board, right?
Yes.
Okay. I was looking at my, my board member over there. And so that is really what you should kind of get, try to get your head wrapped around a little bit, because Rasha can kind of walk you through a little bit of hindsight.
Okay. With regards to the Public Works Director, and only the roadways, but I, I was more concerned with our, our consumption and production of, of water. And I wanted to know about the new plant, and that, that was, yeah, because I'm still...
The water plant in particular.
Yeah, I'm definitely, you know, confused about, well, we can only do five thousand units, but yet we're supplying service to F.I.U. and everybody else around us, and does that come off of five thousand, or?
Got it.
I wanna, I wanna get some clarity on that.
Okay. Marlene is taking some notes, so that we can prepare those individuals for what it is that you're looking specifically for. But we did get direction from the city manager for those folks to attend. It may be the Public Works Director or one of the city engineers that will be in attendance. We are perhaps looking at your December meeting. It may not be that they all appear at the same meeting, but if we can get them all at the same meeting, you know, we would be more than happy to do that for you. We have, also have to work around their, their schedules as well, but that's our, that's our goal, is at your December meeting.
I gotta, now that, since, I've been a business owner in the city for ten years, and now that I fall under certain guidelines, even though it's considered a home business, I now get a, a letter from Mr. Blatt on a regular basis, updating us, and there were some items in there that I was unaware of, that are either going to become something presented to us, with some new ordinances coming up regarding, I forget, businesses, and, and also, we had discussed vehicles parked in driveways. In fact, he sent out a memo today to all business owners that there's an ordinance change. We have not discussed that, did we, or?
Not an ordinance change. What it is, is that was the other item I was going to update you all. We have scheduled a community workshop on November nineteenth to talk about two items, how to define height, specifically in the R one estate district.
Right.
Because they may have a, we had worked with, I had met with the, some of the contractors that work in that area there, and we had revised the height definition, had proposed a change to the height definition. And the city manager said, let's, let's, let's step back and actually workshop that with the community.
Okay.
So that will be part of the discussion, is how that is defined. The second part of that discuss, same discussion will be, you all had passed a while back through the Planning Commission, a commercial vehicle ordinance.
April two thousand fifteen.
Thank you, sir. Not that he recalls the exact year.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you, thank you.
But apparently, I found a little bit more of the background. You asked me why that didn't proceed forward. There was apparently a lot of pushback after the Planning Commission and during the Planning Commission meeting, from what I understand. So the city manager at the time decided not to move it forward, and that will be also part of our discussion. We, we're going to actually present, show that this was this ordinance that was proposed at that time. What is your feedback? What are your thoughts? We're inviting business owners, not just the residents, because this will impact business owners.
Yeah.
So we wanted to make sure that, and that's why Sam sort of blasting it to the business owners.
Yeah, I got it today. It came, it came in, it was an email.
To make sure that, that people turn out for that discussion, because, so that would be that item.
Well, my problem...
Well, some of it, Debbie, some of it, when you get into the, not the definitions, but the, the requirements, when you get into parking, what's allowed and what's not allowed, and there, there's two sections of that, and it's in five, fourteen oh five, and six, because I've been, I've got, I'm part of a homeowners association, I've got, I got a hundred calls a day talking about this right now. And part of the problem is sloppy language, that we've got, we say you can do that if these four things happen, but between them, we don't say and or or.
Does that...
So we don't know if you need all of them, or some of them, and it's subject to interpretation.
Yeah.
And I sat down with several people, and we both, we both read it, and I absolutely understand why someone would read it differently than I did, but that's, that's just the problem with the language, and it shouldn't be there.
I, I agree with him, too, because he had an excerpt in the email today, which, which it said, no wreck cars, or no wreck vehicles are allowed on the property. Well, does it mean the business? The way that it was written sounded like if the wreck vehicle was a business entity, then it wasn't allowed. Didn't mean, you know, that any wreck vehicle was disallowed. So anybody could say, well, you, you didn't specify, you know, that my old wreck Jeep out there is, is, you know, doesn't fall under that guideline. So there are languages, like, there are...
We'll have that discussion about the language at that workshop, because the manager asked to have that one included as well.
Okay.
So that's November nineteenth. It is going to be at Gwen Margolis. It starts at six and ends to P.M. So if you care to come, and, because it's going to eventually come to you all, so if you cared to come, that would be great. Otherwise, we certainly understand if you're...
But are we allowed to, though, under, see, that's what I noticed...
It's publicly noticed, and it usually says one or more council members will be in attendance, so once it's publicly noticed, then...
Okay. Mr. Halt, that's...
As a citizen, you can go and, and ask questions.
But, but we can't.
Or just sit back and listen.
Not minutes. We, I, we end up having like a, yeah, we have some sort of generalized commentary, you know, summary of the events. Okay. All right.
See, Gary, there's no issue with us attending that, right?
Right.
There's no issue with us attending that.
Well, there are, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Geller.
Now become a lawyer, okay.
Section law does apply, if you impose a certain restrictions on what you do. So you can have a discussion on matters that we have coming for you if that discussion is held at publicly notice meeting, and minutes, or some written summary.
Mr. Halt, you're not being heard.
And some written summary is made of that meeting.
Will there be some written summary made?
That's sort of what I was asking. Yeah, it doesn't have to be verbatim minutes, as long as there's some written summary of it.
Because we'll end up have, sorry. What we'll end up is, we'll have both the worksheets from what happened, we have the attendants, you know, people who signed in, and then we have a summary, we generally do, Marlene will work with me, and we'll have like a generalized summary of the results. The next item that I wanted to update you all on is, remember when we went through the definition of convenience store? We talked about the incidental.
Versus a gas station.
Right. And Mr. Pashon and I, we had a rather spirited conversation about how does one measure incidental? And do you do it by volume of sales? How would you do it? And I think you all, being the bright gentleman that you all are, actually agreed that the, maybe you should think about the canopy size of the gas pumps versus the building size. Well, staff went back, and we actually analyzed a lot of different ways that were done elsewhere, and some of them are so convoluted, and the easiest one, and the real direct visual one, is the canopy to building size ratio.
What do other, what do other cities do?
Volume of gas sales versus retail sales.
By, by gallons or dollars?
Different, it's different. It's volume of sales, volume, it's generally volume of sales, is what, what I, what I discovered. Some are also measuring, interestingly enough, they're limiting their measurement to the area of the pumps themselves, not the canopy, since the canopies have to be designed a certain way, because you have to allow to, a car here, a car here, and then a lane for the cars to move through. So some of them just measure the area of the gas pumps themselves.
So is the Costco gas station, a gas station or a convenience store?
It's a gas station.
Because of the size of the canopy?
Well, we don't have that now.
Well, because, why is it a gas station?
Because it's a ga, it's an accessory to Costco as a gas station.
It's a minuscule piece of their business.
It is. It really is.
I mean, it's, it's, it's in...
But we're going to assume that based upon retail sales.
But that's, that's the point I was trying to get to. I mean, it's, it's, it's all a relative thing, that if you say it's by volume, any place that did that volume as a freestanding gas station would absolutely be a gas station. But when they do two hundred and forty million dollars out of that store...
But when they do two hundred and forty million dollars out of that store, and they do, pick a number, ten million dollars in gas, it's, it's not a gas station.
Yeah, that's, that's why that's an accessory use to the Costco. It's not really, I, it's, when you look at that, that's not really a, a standalone business, it's a part of the Costco business itself. So, the primary is the Costco, and the accessory happens to be that gas station.
They would argue with you about that, by the way.
Yeah, well-
It's got different hours, it's got different personnel, it's got different entrances.
They're now us, right?
That's, it's just the way that you look at primary versus incidental. In the case of the convenience store, we were talking about how to measure the incidental component of that, it's not going to be an accessory. It's, i- if you look at really the, the, the definition of accessory and incidental, it's a round robin, it comes right back around to accessory. And it's incidental, but it's an accessory, so you keep going around and around and around.
If I'm not mistaken, currently would exist on Biscayne Boulevard, on the east side of the boulevard, at a hundred and, Exora, between
You're two gases.
south of one thirty fifth and north of one twenty third, there's no gas stations allowed there. So, what, what looks like a gas station on those two corners is basically a convenience store.
The park, those would be grandfathered, they, they-
They were grandfathered in, though.
Those are grand, yeah.
Were they?
Yeah, yeah, they, they've been there for-
Yeah, because those gas stations have been there for ever.
Any gas stations that are gas stations are gonna stay gas stations, they can stay what they are.
Right.
Um, and as long as they don't, if they change ownership or redevelop, as long as that use remains active, or it's only down for six months or less, it can come right back, it's grandfathered in.
You had a gas station originally on a hundred and twenty third and Biscayne, uh, Sophie Slack was there, it's gone, that's now a, uh, a vitamin store.
Vitamin store, because they couldn't rebuild, uh, they weren't grandfathered in.
Right.
When, when it, when it went out of business as a gas station, they were done, they couldn't put a gas station in there.
So, they changed ownership.
That doesn't do, that doesn't-
Change of ownership?
No.
Does nothing.
No, they did away with it being a gas station, once-
Change of use, didn't matter.
Change of use.
Okay.
Right.
And then across the street where McDonald's is years ago, that used to be a Union Seventy Six station, that's gone, that, that's now McDonald's, and then, um, I think a hun, right, as you come out of Keystone, that, the restaurant there, uh, that used to be, uh, as you go westerly, uh, Evo's, I think? That's it.
Yeah, that used to be a-
That was a gas station.
Wasn't that Intimans Bakery?
Yeah, one time, after that, after that, yeah, there was many things.
Question on Costco, Costco is in North Miami Beach now, correct?
We're going to North Miami, yeah.
But it now, it becomes us.
It becomes us.
So, now, how does that gas station accessory play into?
Not gonna matter, because this is before this change.
I see, okay.
And that's not really a convenience store.
Right.
Again, it doesn't meet your definition of a convenience store.
Right.
Because now your new definition, that will not come into effect until thirty-one days after the adoption, the second reading of the actual ordinance, so, uh, right now, right now, it's a accessory to Costco.
Right, okay.
Which begs an ancillary question, we talk about Costco. I, I understand that they were targeting an opening November fourteenth, but they've been unable to make the move because there seems to be an issue as to how they're handling the drainage. Evidently, North Miami Beach said they could not afford to do the drainage hookups, and North Miami said, well, we, we can do it, but it's gonna take us months to get to it. So, uh, given that the existing Costco floods without mercy every time it rains, what is the drainage workup going to be on the new Costco?
I can't, I can't, yes, um, Marlene, would you take a note, we need to, uh, at, but you know-
And, uh, and some of the ground drainage. And North-
The North Miami Beach location.
The new location.
Oh, the new location.
Yeah. And their current, their current opening is scheduled for February sixth. So, they were trying to get it open prior to Thanksgiving, because they don't want to, they wanted, they didn't want to, they don't really want to do anything between Christmas, Tha- Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
I mean, other than sell something and not be moving into new buildings. Um, and, so they could have gotten it done late in January, and they moved it back to February because there's some other South Florida opening that's gonna sync up with that.
So, are they installing now some kind of sump pump, sump pumps to draw the water away, is the water to be connected to a stormwater runoff system?
I don't know, I mean, they, I mean, my, North Miami Beach has kind of said, we don't, we're done.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's been a struggle, and the specifics, my, my guy's not the, doesn't, I mean, I could ask him to go do the digging, but he, he just tells me what the status is, um, to find out what they're actually going to do to do it. Because he didn't know what, they, they never, nobody I've talked to there knows that the previous site was what the previous site used to be, so there's no raised eyebrows.
How could they not?
Well, that, uh, the people don't, I mean, I'm not sure everybody knows.
Right.
Um, not everybody would know, and I, I don't know what goes into that.
I mean, I, I would think that derm had, had a lot to do with, they were the last ones that would, would have to say so, whether or not that site contained any kind of contaminants, correct? They would have to sign off on that.
When he told me contaminated water, I was kind of going, oof, that's kind of a problem on that site.
I thought they were using the, uh, one of the methods that they were using to clean up that site was through the, uh, Metro Day County, uh, station over there, that they were filtering the groundwater through at the corner.
They cleaned up the streetcars to take the rest of the, of the, of the century, actually.
Right.
That would be an ongoing thing. But my concern i- is, when, when it rains, are we going to have another swimming pool, or are they actually connecting their French drain system to some kind of pumping system that'll draw the water out of there?
Well, we certainly are ne, taking notes to try to find some, give you, provide you an update, and perhaps if we could get the Public Works Director to come at the December, your December meeting, perhaps that would be a question we can answer at that time.
Maybe you could clue him in ahead of time, that we'd like to know the, the drainage issue, how they're planning to resolve that, because clearly what they have now on their existing site is completely inadequate.
It's worse, it's worse next door.
It's about second Tuesday.
So, yes, public's is just as bad, there's, there's no way to, they never install pumps, they don't draw the water wrong, they just let it sit there. So, so-
That's North Miami Beach's problem.
Yes, but that's not Miami Beach's problem.
Go down a block south, it'll be ours.
So, since this new Costco is now squarely within our city, I, I would hope that we're doing more than just installing some kind of an underground pipe to hold water. I, I'd hope that, uh, in fact, we're planning to pump the water out to someplace.
Yeah, to North Miami Beach.
Yeah, well, I'd be all right with me.
Pull it right back to them.
Possibly do the public's parking.
That's really under the ve, Debbie, that's really under the venue of public works, right?
It is, that's why I said at, um, our, at our next meeting, we'll either find out if, if they aren't going to be able to attend the December.
Or ma, or, or maybe ask Whistler to come.
Well, that's, you missed that part of it, that's one of his, um, where, uh, that he's supposed to come, or he's gonna send one of the city engineers to come and present to you guys on all the capital projects, including road and any other issues that you guys want, so we're trying to clue them in on everything that you guys want to talk about.
The, the building height on R one, um, got my attention. I had assumed that that would not even be an issue, since there's hardly anything more than two stories in, in R one.
Well, the issue now has to do with Keystone Point.
How you measure height, how height is it actually measured?
All right.
And the McMansions that people want to build out there, and, and how much ground do they build up to stay above the, the, the problem of uh, global warming and, and water intrusion, you see? So, now that's become very controversial, there's some property that wants to add seven feet of fill before they even start the house, which I personally think makes a great deal of sense, given rising sea levels.
Right.
So, uh, and of course, people in Keystone are upset that they're getting an extra free seven feet, when they start to build this mansion, so.
It's a little more complicated than that.
Well, a little more complicated, but that's it in a nutshell.
Not really, it's, the problem was the, that, that, that the issue with some of the homes over there is that when you get to the thirty-five foot height, wherever it's measured from, then there's a, there's an allowable space of up to twenty percent for things like flagpoles, which some people have turned into cabanas.
Oh, really? How nice.
Right.
Well, it's a little-
It's an architectural feature.
So, one of the things that we were looking at is, there's a couple of things. Right now, our code says, height is measured from base flood elevation. The challenge is, when you ha, get these site plans in from the contractors, they're not showing base flood elevation, so you're having to figure out where base flood elevation is on there, so they'll actually show it starting at whatever the grade is.
Uh, whatever the grade is.
Right, um, now, Florida building code says your first habitable floor has to be base flood elevation plus one feet. So, the building code says already, it has to be at, at least a foot for the first finished floor. So, our thirty-five foot height now comes down to thirty-four feet, because they have to already build one foot above that B F E. So, there's a, a major discussion going on, what do we, should we allow any of the appurtenances, you know, that up to twenty percent appurtenances? How should height be measured? Some communities I've worked in measure height from the unimproved grade adjacent to the structure. Some measure it from, and Jason, this is probably up your alley, they measure it from the crown of the road. What happens when you do it by the crown of the road, is all the houses on that street are consistent in height, because the height of that road, the crown of that road makes it consistent.
Because you raise the road.
Well, it, then eventually, then, all of those houses would still become the same height.
I look at Sixteenth Avenue, and I, I, they raised that, I guess, a good three feet.
So, you know, that's generally makes it consistent, so, but the unimproved grade adjacent to the building, you end up with a lot of that.
Well, one of the, the issues that we, we talk about, if we're going to address global warming, what would be the forecasted flood level out there, say by twenty thirty, twenty forty, twenty fifty?
So, if you're going to be there, that's part of the conversation to have, because the community is going to sit and work at, little, uh, do some table work on, on how they, those discussion items, you know, those questions, you know, do we think about what the modeling would show for flooding? Um, do we, do we start, do we just meas, take a different kind of measurement for that area over there? Because that's going to be where the flooding will start. So, do they still want to me, keep it down lower, or do they want then everybody to be a little bit higher? Do they not want any of the appurtenances to, to go, so that's gonna be the part of that conversation.
Mister Held, uh, I'm sure dealt with that in City of Miami Beach, and, and am I correct to assume that they were off on their calculations? To, to a point that, uh, that, if, you, you can't really predict it? Is that, that kind of true? I mean, we could come up with a number and say, okay, let's make it two feet, but then, in fact, it could, it could be greater. I think they, one-
Depending upon the modeling, right, because like in the Keys, for example, they kept, in their charter, the houses are, are capped at thirty-three feet. Um, now, they have serious inundation issues already, so they decided just recently to amend the charter to actually allow freeboard, so that now they're allowing like two feet of freeboard, which they didn't allow that before, because you know, you're thinking about it squat, 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 and if you're in a V E eleven or V fourteen zone, that means your house has to already be feet fourteen feet in the air. So, you're, they're ending up with these houses that are maybe one-story houses on the top of these tall stilts. I don't know that you all would have that here, but we, that's a discussion, part of that discussion to have. And have some serious discussion on how to amend the co, how to amend that definition. I'm finished with my, mine, and I know this has been a great conversation, um, but we're done here.
I have one more question, Miss Love, and when we, when I had the, the benefit of the briefing on tonight's program, we were talking about this possible proposal to renovate the parking lots, uh, north of a hundred and twenty-fifth street there. And there was gonna be a letter written or a memo inviting someone to come and talk on that, did we, did we get that done, did we get what?
No, I need for you to direct the staff at this meeting to, to do that?
Yes, then, let's, let's do that for the record, that there's gonna be renovations proposed. I, I understand it's coming out of Carol Key's councilperson's budget.
The alley parking lots?
More or less, uh, to revamp the, the parking lots, uh, behind the commercial properties that, that line a hundred and twenty-fifth street, I don't know how many blocks they're, they're dealing with. But, uh-
That's one of the, that's one of the things that is coming through the DAYPAC, uh, the alleyways, and, um, there's gonna, there's a, a, quite a bit of discussion in the Downtown Development Authority, um, that, you know, to turn the alleyways into attractive, you know, areas that are just not ugly drive-throughs that we have right now, so. Um, am I correct, Mister, uh, Mister James is chairman of DAYPAC, so he might want to say, have a few words on that?
Yeah, so, we, we did create a subcommittee on DAYPAC, um, and we, one of our, our, our board members, she was able to allocate some grants or some funds, um, I believe it was around fifteen thousand dollars to do a pilot program. We just found out about it last Friday, and so what we're gonna do is actually go out there, um, our next meeting, which is in December, I think it's the third Friday of next month, and we're gonna just walk the space, get a feel for it, see what we can do, um, in terms of just a small-scale version of it, uh, it's gonna be temporary. And then the idea is that, eh, from there, we're gonna kind of s- spin off and see how we can improve that area and create some type of cohesion within everything in that corridor, and, and actually, uh, guide people, make that connection from, you know, those who enjoy all the events at Moca to pass through, uh, you know, Liberty Park, which is gonna be redeveloped soon, and then utilize spaces that the city already owns. And so, right now, we're kind of spitballing ideas, and hopefully that goes well, uh, but yes.
But I think the chair had, and Mister Chair, I did talk to the city engineer, not Whistler, but, um, Akin, um, and I mentioned your idea, and if you'd like to share your, continue to share your, your ideas.
Thank you, what I have put out to Miss Love is that if we're revamping these, these parking lots in the back, we, we should be looking further out in the future, and we should be providing designated spacing for bicycles to park, because there isn't any. There should be designated areas to line up motorbikes and scooters, because there isn't any. Right now, you put one bike in a parking spot when you could really get four or five of them, if you lined it out properly. And there's no provisions anywhere in the city as yet for electric car charging stations. And if we're going to spend this money on new lighting, new paving, and, and do these parking lots over seriously, then we need to be providing charging stations for electric vehicles.
Those should all be required.
They're, except they're not, you see?
No, I understand, they're not.
That's the problem.
And they're, they're in the city's parking areas, so.
You know, if it was a private developer, they'd have to do some of that, but the city, you know, government exempts itself from all of these requirements, and, and we need to get these back on board with that, it's, it's like, well, well, it's like the, the, the DAY County Courthouse. The county exempted the courthouse from fire safety regulations for forty years. Because they didn't, they didn't want to put in the sprinkler system. When they did put in the sprinkler system, they went with the low bid, they bought all their sprinkler pipes from China. Most of them rusted out within three years, and they all needed to be replaced. So, they, 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 they paid for that job twice over, you see? So, but that's what happens when, when government is allowed to exempt itself from its own government safety regulations. Uh, they didn't even put railings along the, the stairwells going into the basement for most of my career. So, uh, yes, I, I, I agree, it's gotta be required, but we have to unfortunately put this into the DAYPAC plan, and we have to put this into whoever has got it in mind to do this and say, we need the bicycle parking, we need the motorbike parking, we need the charging stations. Otherwise, we're building for nineteen fifties Ozzy and Harriet. Those days are long over, we, we, we need to be building for the next thirty years, not the last fifty. And I, I want to raise these issues and make sure that they, we do what we can to get them incorporated into the plan, so, so this is taken care of. So, so that was, that was a, a sidebar discussion I had with Miss Love at the time that I, I was briefed on tonight's agenda packet. So, the rest of you now understand where I'm coming from on that point. Uh, and having said that, our next meeting will be December the fourth at seven P M.
I'm not gonna be here, though.
You'll be missed.
I will, I will be out of town until the seventh.
All right, Mister Reach has taken a prolonged vacation of at least a week. You'll be missed, but it's okay, uh, do we have any formal agenda items for that, or is it all gonna be reports?
No, you'll, as I mentioned to you guys earlier, we're working with the applicant on the development agreement, and the city attorney's office is actually, um-
If it gets done in time, but it might not, so.
Yes. Yes, but right now, it's, it's on the schedule to be heard by you all. Yes. But right now, it's, it's on the schedule to be heard by you all.
And that's the only thing that's scheduled, otherwise it's all reports.
Uh, let me look. I think so, sir. Yes.
That, see, that would be a good night for reports. And if the development agreement rolls over to January, it's not the end of the world.
Right.
I hope that we will not have to have a special meeting in December for that issue that we can roll it over.
No, we would, we would not want that to occur, so.
That development agreement can hold till January if they don't get it done. Let's try to dot the i's, cross the t's on that. Let's not rush it. Because when we start trying to rush these things through to make an early, uh, setting, then that's where we make mistakes and get sloppy.
Can I, uh, Mister Chairman, I'm, we, we had brought up, um, a few meetings back about changing the bonuses.
Changing the.
Like for different things, like we were talking about green, you know, like you get points for, uh,
Yes, that.
Greenery and all. Wha- what are we gonna discuss that? Like, we're talking about, uh.
Bonus units and bonus, bonuses for things that we think are participation awards.
Yeah, yeah, like, you know, you know.
Okay, there's things that we've learned in the last couple of years.
Like, like Bob. Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll give you an example. Like, we should give points off of rooftop gardens and putting the swimming pools up there. Something of that nature where you have more, uh, percolation in your ground, where you're not taking it up for your parking spaces. And, and, and different types of designs like that. We talked about that, because right now, we're giving away points where things are.
Yeah, if there's one thing we've learned from Houston is that you can't pave over every square foot of land that you've got in the city. And that's what we've been doing right along. And, and the, the point is, how do we revamp to award bonus units for green spaces to allow for this accumulation of water and, and drainage? Instead of giving them bonus points for taking away parking, you see, so.
Well, one of the things that, um, uh, before Leon and Kent left, I had worked with them to produce a new potential schedule to change all of that. And, uh, Mister Pashon's committee, the Stormwater Committee, actually.
Storm, Flood Playing Management Committee.
Thank you, sir. Um, actually provided comment and feedback on it. I am now going to be working on that as part of the update to the, um, actual NRO criteria, cause that's coming for a workshop too, which you guys will be invited to that as well. That should be sometime in January, um, to talk about the NRO and potentially, um, you know, potential changes to that. And that would also be that scheduled, because I'd like to see it be more vul- uh, resilience, um, low impact development. Things like that are actually needed in the city to be resilient, um, uh, and sustainable versus some of the things that should be just mandated. Um, because we do have a section of the code that says, if you're in a certain corridor, or you're requesting bonus units, thou shalt do this, X, Y, Z. But we are currently, currently in the table, those, some of those X, Y, Z's are in that bonus table. So we need to take a, we're taking a closer look at that bonus table.
Yeah, we, we've gotta start rewarding people for open spaces on development. We've gotta reward people for drainage areas. We've gotta reward people for moving amenities to the rooftop instead of taking up parking lot space.
Additionally, things that we provide bonuses for should be requi- bike, bicycle parking.
Yes, exa- that.
Should be required. It shouldn't be a bonus unit.
It is required.
But, but not enough.
For certain development, it is required.
At, at some.
But it's also a bonus unit.
Right, that's what I was saying, is that, that's the reason, that's why we're, that's why we need to do that and take a look at that. And those things that are already required, uh, no.
Yeah, exactly.
No.
Yeah, and one of the, the, the topics that I, I discussed with Miss Love, I, I go to Jimmy's Restaurant quite often on the weekends and holidays for, for breakfast out. Well, you know, I, I could ride my bicycle over there, but you know, you can't find a place to chain up a bicycle in the Colonial Shopping Center. Not by Jimmy's and not anywhere else. And yet we've gone ahead and encouraged the developer to put all new facades completely around the Colonial Shopping Center. But at no point apparently did we say, well, yes, we're happy to let you do it, but you've gotta provide bicycle parking in your shopping. We, we didn't do that. And so, so you can't ride your bicycle.
We do a lot of that.
To a lot of what we, we.
We don't do a lot of that. Or we do a lot of that, however you wanna look at it, no.
And, and we, you can't ride your bicycle to a lot of places in this city unless you chain it up to a signpost, which theoretically violates some kind of traffic ordinance or something, but you really don't have any choice in the matter.
No.
And, 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 you know, we, 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 we're, we're not using common sense and, and forethought on this, um.
Well, we have rental bicycles that run out of time and then the people park them in the swales. Which I, I found in my front yard. I found these, these.
And they take them all with them in their backyards, which we understand.
Right, you know.
I don't know why we don't require credit cards. Instead, it would've made a lot more sense, but that wasn't my choice.
There, there is just a proliferation of those bikes all over the place, abandoned.
Lime bikes?
The green bikes. Those green bikes.
Yeah, those lime bikes.
It's a, it's an international problem.
Yes, and, and.
And so are those scooters, by the way. Cause we were, we were having them, people were riding.
I, I know. I, I see those scooters downtown. I don't blame people for using the scooters, because there's no place to park a car.
But they, once the money runs out, they just leave them. And now you got a proliferation of abandoned scooters and, uh.
You, you, you often, you often. We need to be providing scooter parking and we need to be providing bicycle parking.
Which, which by the way, also, I might add, that Uber and Lyft is a goldmine. Because if people are giving up driving, but at the same time, there are more lu- uh, uh, Lyft drivers
More congestion.
and more, more congestion from Lyft drivers and Uber than I've ever seen in my entire life.
And that's verified by what's happening at the airport.
Yes. It, it's just a proliferation. Go down Federal Highway up by Fall Outter Airport, and they're lined up along the highway.
Yeah.
And they're even now parking on five ninety-five waiting for their calls. I mean, it's getting, it's getting to be ludicrous.
Well, yeah.
So, so we've taken care of getting cars off the road, but now we've got this proliferation of, and this is gonna happen to downtown North Miami. Eventually, it's gonna, it's going to attack us. We're gonna have the same problem.
You know, someday we lose so long. You know, one of the odd things that, that I looked at with, with FDOT.
We should be so lucky.
FDOT is, is so engaged with MDX in building highways for cars. But you know, they haven't built a single access road for a bicycle. Now, we've got all this, this, this land chewed up for highways. You know, uh, we could build for fractions of the dollar, some kind of elevated steel construction thing for, for a bicycle roadway going each way on, on I ninety-five, with the same exit ramps and all that provision. And do something positive to get people out of the cars, you see? But instead, we, we're talking about it, but we aren't allocating any financial resources to do that. And, and they're talking about this underlying business for the, the, the train track down south. And how wonderful it is that they're ma- they're only building a half mile and they're spending over a million dollars on a, on a half mile of something that's already there. You know, what are we spending a million dollars for? I don't get it. This, this underline will take thirty years to get built at the rate we're funding it, you know?
Not, not to be in defense of MDX, but in case anybody didn't see the report, car sales are booming, not decreasing. And we have more cars now in this country than we've ever had. So, the idea of everybody.
Because you have to have a car. At sixteen, you're dead in the water. You can't get a job. You can't go to college if you don't have a car. Cause we don't have mass transit. But you see, if we'd start building bicycle lanes along the highway system, you know, as a separate element, we, you, you wouldn't need quite so many cars. Cause a lot of these younger people are very happy riding bicycles into downtown and riding bicycles to work and, and stuff. You know, uh, we're, we're in a situation where the millennial generation is in no rush to get a car. They're in no rush to buy a house. They don't need to be. They're, they're adapting to the, to the transit options and we're failing to provide the bicycle lanes. And we're failing to provide the support structure.
Kevin, what, what you're talking about is, it's a national issue. Uh, like Philadelphia, to go two miles in Philadelphia by bus, uh, takes over two hours, okay? It, it's, uh, I'm sorry, it takes over a half hour, I believe. I'm sorry, not a two hours. A lot of these streets were designed and up in the older cities, they're in a colonial era. And they're not made for the traffic that we have today. That's why you do need mass transit, underground trans- right, uh, here, you're not gonna be able to put tunnels so forth and so on, but we do need mass transit, elevated structures with, uh, you know, and that's what we're gonna have to invest in the future.
I, I agree, but.
We won't see it maybe in our lifetime, or the, but then I won't see it, but maybe the next generation will see it. But that's progress. And, uh, that's the way it is.
Well, yes, but there's no reason we can't start building a highway network for bicycles. We built it for cars. Let's build it for bicycles.
A lot of the complete streets projects now that you'll see that DOT is moving toward has dedicated bike lanes.
Inexorably slowly. And unfortunately, none of our streets in the city are wide enough for complete streets. You know, they're all too narrow.
The rightways are too narrow to convert.
Yes.
Although they're trying to do some, some more interesting things around complete streets, so we may see some different things come out.
I mean, we're, we're at the mercy of the DOT with a hundred and twenty-fifth street, which is our biggest bottleneck, without question. It, it's, again, I stated earlier, it should not take twenty-five minutes to get from the east side of, of North Miami to central North Miami.
Unfortunately, a lot of that traffic is.
I mean, from Miami Avenue to Biscayne Boulevard, it will take twenty-five minutes on some days to, to, to get that far.
And, and, and as the traffic studies are, are showing, is that a lot of the traffic isn't the city generated traffic. It's actually mass through traffic.
Past through, yes. We understand that. Where we're past through cities.
But it contributes to the, the throughput. I mean, it doesn't make any difference where it comes from.
Right.
So you already, you already have, um, and state statute says that if you already have a failing roadway and a development comes in, they're not required to mitigate
That's right.
anything beyond what their little tiny little bit would be. Um, it used to be that they would have to be, you know, build new roads. So you'd see this massive amount of turn lanes and new, new roadways, um.
And the currency standards were thrown out by the Florida Legislature a few years ago.
Yes. And so now we can't make them do anything beyond their own. However, you'll see like with, um, the applicant that was here earlier, uh, they actually had a meeting, um, on, onsite with our, uh, with John O'Brien, and observed how the traffic flows and the, the turning issues, the little Gordian knot that happens there. And, you know, thinking about, you know, signalization at that location and aligning and, you know, potentially aligning the driveways to the two developments that's across the street from one another. Um, potentially, you know, uh, so that they could, cause they still have to get DOT approval, but, you know, getting a signal there. Um, they don't have to do that. And, you know, by law, they don't have to do that. But you heard them. They are looking at how it would impact their own development, which is a very wise decision. And a lot of developers recognize that. They recognize it can impact their.
That's one of the reasons why I did bring up the question.
Yeah, interestingly enough, though, on public radio the day, the other day, I was listening to this report. China, as you know, we used to see pictures of China with all the bicycles and scooters and everything else like that. And they said that as these people now move into the middle class, as they have a growing middle class in China, the first thing they do is get a car. Okay? They don't stay with their bicycles. They don't stay with their scooters. The first thing they do is get a car. So it's, it, it's, and there's a psychology about car ownership and it's a whole complicated thing. But it was just really interesting that here we have people who are upwardly mobile, who had the scooters and the bicycles, but as soon as they get enough disposable income, the first thing they do is buy a car.
Cause we built our society around cars instead of people.
Well, this is in China, Kevin.
Yes, well, in, in China, remember too, there's a factor that, that they didn't have an interstate highway system until more recently. And so now people have mobility. Now they can go great distances, which, you know, thirty years ago couldn't be done. They had no road network.
Traveling on an ox cart or, um, riding a bike must've been a long distance for them to.
Yeah.
Yes, that's why they, they didn't have that far to go. Now they're, they're tying their, their whole country together with, with massive highway systems. And so people get their cars so they can go to other cities and provinces and see the country they live in.
They still need permits to go from one province to the other.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, my God.
Imagine if we.
The other, the other thing that they have is facial recognition all over the country. And the other thing that they have is they're putting all their Muslims into concentration camps. So, you know, China's not that critical.
No, no, it isn't. But you, you understand what drives the, the car business over there.
Yeah.
So, all right, if there's nothing further to come before this commission, uh, the chair will declare this meeting adjourned. We thank all of you for everything you've gone and done. It's so nice.
And I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Indeed, yes.